We are live.
No, there's no reason we can't get this stuff out of there. I'm thoroughly worked at it earlier.
Can we drop this on the line?
Probably, but the good thing is I got it to work, which I don't really want to get out of working that much.
Well, I'll take it.
Yeah. But it was perfect today because I was able, and then when I deleted it out there, it said, "You wanted a notification?" What if it's no, you're not like, yes, I deleted it.
I did.
That's funny.
Okay.
All right. You want some more than just the...
No, you got it.
I do. For worship. I'm gonna, do I gotta ask for a motion opening too?
No, we don't need to, just say we're gonna open it, but go through the pledge.
All right, well, we're gonna open this immediately, maybe it works out at 6:03 PM, but we're gonna start off with the pledge, and we'll let the office staff take us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, our representative states, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Do you guys have any questions from last week? Or any new questions I didn't answer from last time we met? So, the top thing, the email that I sent out, going through all of the changes that were made to the budget since we met last. There is the one change that I made since I sent it out on Friday was we added $600 to celebrations, or not celebrations, for the community events for the shred program, which was $600, which gets split with the bid. Is that on? Is that on? Yeah. So, I also sent you guys a property tax, a PDF of the OSC tax cap webinar that they've done in the past, since we had talked about the tax cap for general fund, whether or not to override it. So, the first packet is the general fund as it sits if the tax cap does not override. And the second set of handouts is if the general fund tax cap, if you pass to override it. Now, I wasn't sure. One says over, one says under, on the top. So, the main difference is obviously the property tax revenue. So, if we override the tax cap, that means that the tax rate will stay the same. If we stay, if we, if you choose to stay within or under the tax cap, that reduces the property tax revenue.
Could you explain how the tax, because it's really convoluted the way that they do it, just for some reference?
So...
Because you'd think it was the rate, but it's not, it's...
Yeah.
No, they take into consideration the property tax levy from last year, which is the 572,094. They take into account the tax base growth factor of 1.0053, the pilots that were received in 2024, which were 59,935, our allowable levy growth factor of 1.02, and what the pilots receivable for 2025, which, in the case if we're gonna override the tax cap, would be 60,528. And then it allows us to input the carryover, which is how much we were under the tax cap last year, of $8,889. So, which brings us to our tax levy limit of 596,123. So, if you choose to go over the tax cap, the proposed levy is 637,352, which is a difference of $41,229. Now, the problem with choosing to, one of the issues is that if you choose not to override the tax cap, property tax revenue goes down, and next year you could go back up, and then you get, and you wanna, I, it's up to you guys, whether you wanna stay flat, or you wanna see the ups and downs. So, it's ultimately up to you. Now, if you stay within the property tax cap, which I would still recommend voting to, passing a resolution to override the tax cap, just in case there's a mathematical error somewhere, the property tax revenue is the 596,123.
Now, most villages do it anyway, they pass that, just a case, and that's something recommended by DiCo.
Right.
Right. It just covers our butts or something.
Exactly.
Then a mathematical error, because if we do find that there's an error, we have to move money to reserves.
Mm-hmm. That just makes, that makes sense.
Yeah. With that in mind, the one that says over shows you what the budget looks like, I mean, at the end of the day, the total revenue and total expense isn't changing. It's just how much property, the main difference is property tax revenue and pilots.
And you can't tell what Mayor Byard wants to do, just so we know.
For sewer?
Just for the tax cap.
Oh, for the tax cap. He would like to stay at, he would like to override the tax cap, and keep things steady at the current tax rate.
Well, that means you know, you gotta do it.
Focus on, focus on the candidates.
Yeah, I think, I think the...
That's certainly up to you guys. But I wanted you, I wanted you guys to see from a tax cap calculation, I know it's a convoluted calculation, but I wanted you guys to be able to see the visual of it.
Right, and it's understandable, so it's not, you know...
Right. Right. So, I'm gonna go through the changes that I've made since we met last. They are the ones in this color, because they were not this color when they were on the screen. We printed it a little darker. So, we'll start with general fund. And the first one that's highlighted is the property tax revenue and pilots. Those both, those both obviously are impacted by the tax rate. We lowered building alteration permits on 882555 from 48,000 to 25,704. I had originally based it on what we've done this year, but I'm told that this year has been a odd year, unusual year for permits.
Whoopsie, and I'll look again.
882555. And then we also adjusted the sale of equipment up to 170 to make it more accurate for market. And the final revenue for general that has been changed is we're appropriating, if we're going to override the tax cap, we're appropriating a fund balance of 101,154. Do you guys have any question on the revenue changes?
No. Can you say it online, sir?
Yeah. That's a change. He's asking about the third treasure office personnel.
So, the point ones,
He's on it.
Obvious.
The point ones are based on the... The year, any point ones that you see that are increasing are based on the merit raises and staff raises.
Yeah, exactly.
So, they automatically change. Yeah, we're on expenses now, on page 10 of 15. Depending on which general fund you're looking at, they both, they both have the same. The 1325.404 and 405. They are both more in line with what would actually be spent.
The discount.
The code updates and legal.
We just did that, I think.
I can read the history of that.
Yeah, that was a thing.
That we raised to 3,500. That covers at most three local laws. So, I think that's a good buffer, should, we need it. And then there was discussion.
Five person board.
No, I know, I'm just saying, you don't decide that.
1010100, whoops, sorry.
1010100.
1010100. No increase?
So, there is, I don't see an increase from year to year, was there increases from prior years?
Daryl had said, because they just got a big one, but that's, again, up to them, but...
I did not, I did not include an increase, even though it says 3% next to it.
Mayor Byard said no increase, because there was a 6.6% increase last year. But that's up to you guys.
Yeah, I did, it says 3% next to it, but it was not raised, no.
You said, you get 3% next to it?
In the comment section, it says 3%, but I... It's a little fake out for ya, sorry.
Well, this is the time for you guys to decide.
Yeah, do you want it up 3%?
3%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They sound like a big one.
Okay.
I heard you'd be making nice on an hour.
Yeah, I'll be sorry, you don't manage to get it.
No, you don't, don't do the math.
3%.
Nothing in the mayor line, though.
No.
Daryl, if you're watching, oh, maybe he's watching.
Well, I think the mayor should get 3%.
Well, that's included.
Daryl, let's not get crazy, no?
He says, I'll give it for ya. I don't know if he comes up with it.
No.
Okay, well, do you want me to print it, and then just, you guys should, I think I should print it, and then just for fairness.
Even if he says no, we could still load up his, and then he loses anyway. Oh, yeah, it's competitive to the other, yes. No, it's the mayor.
Okay. The other line that there was conversation about when we met last was 885110403, the seminars in education. And wanting to decrease it from 4,000 down to around...
881325.
5110403.
5110403.
Oh, sorry.
The second one from the bottom. I had a little...
He took it from seminars and education.
So, that one is low, the actual year-to-date is low for this year because Jimmy did not go to highway school. So...
Yet.
Yet.
That's this year, is this...
This is June, yeah.
Yeah, so he will.
Yeah, he will, but it's, it's June, so it's gonna be the next one here. Simply what we do is, the former will go to highway school, and I'll go to NICOM, so we can sort it out, so... And they're, you know, they vary the cost of each of those, but they've got a law, so open them then, and then there's, you know, maybe it's...
Okay. And then the line 6989.4, the leader, for the conversation with Daryl, we increased that to 29,900.
He did almost secure 4.5 million.
Yeah. And you give him 900.
And that number's been flat for several years, I had 20 in my team.
So, that was a conversation with Daryl that wasn't from Matt. I have, I have reached out, asked him a couple of times, and he has said he wanted to speak with the mayor first, so I'm not, I'm gonna have to follow it again to make sure that conversation happened, I don't.
Because he doesn't want.
Yeah, and that's me, it's the...
It's personal, so he doesn't want it. What do you think, it's really not that much?
I know, exactly.
Yeah, no.
Fine. We're gonna have enough left to do, we got 4.587, right?
I agree.
Do you guys...
I was all mad at work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, too.
I think we're all agreeing on it, yeah.
Do you, do you want to...
It happens often, so you should mark it down.
No, no, we are very fortunate.
Did you want to hire?
I, I mean, if he, if he told you he was gonna talk to Daryl, let him share with Daryl, but he's gotta do it soon, right?
Oh, yeah.
Because the board, the leader board decides each amount.
This board is open to that. It's more based on...
Yeah, that's right.
The other line that was adjusted, since this was emailed to you on Friday, or the only line that was adjusted since this was emailed to you, was celebrations line, 7550.4, that was increased $300 for the shred event. And the shred event, $600, it gets split with the bid.
After the event meeting this morning, I asked for it to increase it, because it was a very successful event, and we may actually do a second one in October, on the same day as the health fair, to maybe bring some people to the health area.
And then...
About 7550.4 for the white Christmas, 22 grand for more lights, is that right, Jay?
That was per the mayor's request.
Yeah, they wanna extend the sunburst in the, in the scrollles down on North Avenue, some, for 10 more, it's up to, I think, $740 apiece plus shipping. And then there was a discussion about adding garland to the poles. If we avoid that 70-show tinsel garland, and have, you know, we looked at, I don't know how many that I sent, 16 different things. There's one of them that's made for poles, it's green garland, and it's got LED lights on it, so you can enjoy it at night and during the day. And that's like 13 grand for the number of poles that would be, I forgot, we had 40 poles, I think, or 50. We are looking at, there's one, resident does one out on Dunedin Avenue, it's pretty nice with LED road lights. So, we started putting that, those numbers together, to look at the road lights, and that's considerably less than the garland, and you do like the white and red road light.
And that's funny, because I was gonna ask you about those things you put around the lights, it's time to upgrade those.
Upgrade them?
Yeah, get something new.
Well, to reach deep, you better reach deep.
Yeah.
Didn't we buy a lot of parks at the place, Tim?
I'm not...
No, I don't think you...
I thought we did.
I don't believe so.
I don't.
Look, they were about, it turned about 13 grand last time we got them, I think.
Thought we used them for...
You double check that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, and we got 30 of them last, or 30, so it's like, maybe 40, yeah. So, we're gonna continue, we may be able to adjust it down if we, the LED ones are agreeable, but the direction we got was garland, and like I said, you can get that tinsel garland, so...
It's almost like, oh, wanna go back to soar and lights, or that older yellow look, and then
No.
the, the, then the LED things are rounded or white. It looks kinda, it looks kinda odd, so either...
Let's get the road lights, the white, red, white, road lights. Well, we've got softer LED lights in the, in the poles on Main Street, and especially the ones near, on the side streets, but I don't, they're consistent, I guess.
Yes.
Because there, you know, there's kind of an elevation of its weight around them.
Yeah, it looks like the, like the butt of a flower, and...
Or some, the clerk and treasurer will like, yeah. But I think it...
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
I think the road lights have lasted longer than the...
Well, it's gotta be something that you can see in the day, road lights don't help the day, just, other people mention it during the day, it doesn't look very decorative.
Well, that's what we were looking at, I, well, I guess the red, because the way, the road lights, you're right, because we use, we would use red and white, but it's a light itself, it's a tube, and what they use down there is a red tube.
Yeah, if you had a green or a red tube, or, yeah, that would look good.
Yeah.
Right, because then during the day, you'll see the color of the road.
Yeah, because if it was like white and red.
Yeah, I like that.
Tubes, and then just white light inside of them. How many you can get LED red tubes? That would be nice. What's that?
Oh, yeah. We've only got a half hour, so already, pushing.
So, the next line that was questioned was 8814048, concrete block, because it was increased from 4,000 last year to 7,500 for next year. And that's mainly because of just doing more drainage work.
Yeah.
And then...
Sweeper.
The sweeper, I input the, the actual lease payment, but I think that's, I think I'm wrong with that. Am I right with that?
What's that?
The lease payment for the sweeper.
8170? Yeah, there, I think when we originally got budget numbers, we'll get something like the sweeper, it should be, and actually, it should be in soon, it was 1,319 grand for the street sweeper, so if I do that now, over a...
I need to double, and not...
Oh, no, no, it's 58.5 is the down payment on it, and then moving forward is gonna be like 54.6 or something like that for a
I need to update that.
Lease payment, but the 58.5, no, actually, 58.5 should be coming out of this year, so it's 62, so then moving forward, it's like 54 or something. Probably tell you.
We just talked about it today.
Exactly, yes.
It was Little Wonder or Skag?
I was just thinking...
It's 5330516.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, no, 50, that's the price.
200.
305.16 cents, that's the sweeper lease payment. He said Little Wonder or Skag. Oh, that's the leaf blower, where we're cleaning the parks, there's a lot behind leaf blower for the parks, and, you know, love fields, or something like that, we take it. It speeds up, we borrowed, actually borrowed one from the school, it's on a vent trap, but it sped it up a lot, but it doesn't get in the, it's a big huge...
So, it doesn't get into the little, yeah.
Well, I think it's, you gotta, it's a lot more maneuvering around and stuff like that, so this is one that we could have here and use. Probably with leaf blowers, we have, everybody wants them at the same time, too.
I know.
When we're, there is one, we wanna borrow it, and so... Yeah, all right.
And then another number that got updated was retirement number, and that's taken right from New York State Retirement. And then 10% goes to sewer fund, and 90% to... And then, we can chat about sewer.
So, everybody was in agreement with the flat?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's important, too, when you think about our village through, let's say 7%, with the number of housing units and things. And we've taken on more streets, we've taken on, you know, and when you're special, when you, when you grow, there's more people are gonna use the services, more people are gonna use things, the streets, the last 30 months, I think we discussed it the last time, asphalt, concrete, those things, construction, about 58%. But the state, for some reason, thinks that when you have more people, you can drive less, but it costs more.
Yeah.
You know, it's just...
You're not getting anywhere.
No, it's, it's, yeah, it's just, can you spin your wheels, plus the inflation, it's...
Because we want people to come into our village if we...
Yeah.
To do that big grant, maybe we're gonna end up getting lots more people in here, who do the things that we say we're gonna do within our...
So, on to, on to sewer. So, sewer, there is a conversation with Tom Zuber about reclassing sewer to, from an enterprise to a general, or to a governmental fund, which you two weren't here for that conversation. But as sewer sits right now, it is always showing a deficit. So, if it was reclassed to a governmental fund from enterprise fund, it will show, except for showing that it's in the red, it will show in positive. And that's based on how we calculate, because of GASB, not because of just other things, but because of how we how we do entries for like fixed assets, depreciation, pension liability, OPEV, and compensated absences. Those are currently reported in the, within the sewer funds. They are not reported within the general fund, they're reported on the K&amp;W fund, so they don't show, they won't show sewer in a negative light if it's reclassed to a governmental fund.
So, and what's the process of reclassing it?
Of your general entries.
And who is, who is, who is, is he attorney, look at that? Does he have any legal concerns?
He said they could look at it.
So, he hasn't been part of that?
It's more of an obvious thing, that our MMV, Tom, went on Monday, because, and I'm assuming he understands that, but for the the big part that stuck out for me when he was explaining it is that in the general fund, you're not looking at every employee's retirement for the life of their career, they're only looking at it per one year. So, but when you show it that way on sewer, it makes them play their own plays, no, really, they're not, because I think they're not gonna pay...
Right, because it's, every year, just not, this was the first time that was...
And Freed never really recommended it to us, but...
He was surprised, and it was...
Yeah. And it would be easier for her for budgeting purposes, because we're doing it in two different ways. The general fund is shown completely different than, confusing for her, and it's not...
And because sewer touches everyone in the village, it can be reclassed to a governmental fund. It'd be different if it didn't, didn't touch everybody in the village, there's dust.
And not just easier, but for recording purposes, they recommend it for the state reports that we have to do. Oh, and Tom Zuber will be coming, Tom Zuber from MMV is coming to present the financial statements for the next meeting, so we've asked him to explain that to you all as well.
Oh, that'd be perfect, yeah.
That would be, that would be helpful.
Okay.
So, for sewer fund, there's going to be 347, so first off, the rate stays the same. So, for sewer funds, there's going to be a hundred and forty-seven, so first off, the rate stays the same in this budget. A hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and two dollars is used from unreserved fund balance. And then, we use the remaining a hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and six dollars from ARP funds. And then, moving on to expenses, the one expense, I changed a few. Contingency change, just, just a little bit. And then, the GG.
What line is that?
Contingency, yeah. One nine nine zero point four. It, it increased the same rate as what the total revenue expense is. And then, the other line, one of the other lines that changed a little was the GG eighty-one thirty point two, the sewage treatment equipment. It's ninety-five thousand, and that's the grind hog, and lower replaced that. And eighty-one thirty point four one five, and that's a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand of that's for the barn. Retirement, the ninety ten point eight, retirement change based on New York State, the, the ten percent from general fund. And then, the other line, the ninety-seven ten point six, three hundred and five thousand seven hundred and sixteen, that number comes from BPD, and that's our debt payments. And I had said at the last meeting, that I had wanted to see if we could get it down to one fifty. Lindsay and I had that conversation. Because the deliverables in, in that project have changed, and that project has increased so much, it is not favorable to go down to one hundred and five. And I have sent you guys another sheet earlier, I think yesterday. And this details, so after twenty-four twenty-five, the debt service payment of two hundred and five thousand. Every year after that, the debt service payment will be five hundred and seven thousand six hundred and nine dollars. If we wanted to pay more next year, more than the three oh five, the five oh seven, six oh nine will go down. But I'm not really sure how much more you could necessarily, could really pay.
Then we're dropping a hundred grand, we got two more years, and our old debt will be retired, we'll drop, well, about thirty grand off, and then, about five, six more years, and we'll drop another seventy or sixty something off.
So, that was the story about the debt service. So, it could, it could change if we wanted to pay more this, for in twenty-four twenty-five. I don't know how much more you wanna make towards it. Do you guys have any questions, anything that I haven't followed up with, that you'd like to follow up with? Or that I haven't answered clearly enough? Are we good with going, with the tax cap over? And your agreements with that?
Yep.
And the sewer rate that maintain the same rate for sewer?
Probably should do that, I think Daryl promised that her levels stay the same for the next ten years, so.
I do, I do recommend that to you, we, we visit that.
I agree with you. Probably needs to go up now, but.
He was very adamant about not.
The mask, the mask is gonna start now. He's gotta understand that's not.
So, my follow-ups are the, the step two salary lines. Seeing where we bought the lights out, if we bought the lights out of Park and Rock last time. I have to update the lease payment for the street sweeper. And you guys are in agreement with, with over the tax cap, and you're good with sewer rate? You guys all set then?
Yep. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Glad we had you.
Excellent, excellent.
Mr. Yeteriori, when you hear y'all, it's okay, but we know y'all.
We warmed up all the sheets, so you're marked.
Did a heck of a job of it, too, thank you.
No, you do, though.
I went to, that was.
All right, six thirty-nine, we're about to close the meeting, everybody, good?
What?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Yep.
I, I, yes, yes.
Thank you.